Hey, hi, welcome to the Village Buchanan Tuesday, November tenth, two thousand and twenty Board Meeting. This meeting is being conducted in accordance with Executive Order two oh two point one. Also, the ability to do the Zoom meeting has been extended until December fifth. Please note that you may hear the meeting live by going to Village Facebook page at the time of the meeting. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everyone. Okay. First, we're going to approve the minutes from October sixth, two thousand and twenty. Any questions, comments, corrections?
I have none.
All right. On a motion?
Don't move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Moving on to October twenty seventh, two thousand and twenty Workshop Meeting. Corrections, comments?
Nothing from me.
Nothing from me.
I'm good.
Yes, I have something.
Oh, I'm sorry, Nick.
I have something on, um, on page two.
Okay.
Under, uh, two twenty-six Travis Avenue. Uh, where it says, "Trustee Zachary thought the village could possibly reword section two eleven dash seventeen," which is titled "Permitted Variations From Required Bulk Regulations In Order To Allow Mr. Calabro His Variance." That kind of is a good summation, except it's not technically, if we make the change that, that I, uh, proposed, and I did go over this with Stephanie, then you're not actually allowing him to get his variance, because he would no longer need a variance. So I wanted to change, allow Mr. Calabro, instead of his, his variance, I'd like to change it to, uh, to conform to a revised code that works broadly. That was more the spirit of the, uh, conversation. They have to Mr. Calabro, instead of his variance, to conform to a revised code that works broadly.
To reform to a revised code.
Conform to a revised code that works broadly.
Stephanie, do you have any comments on that?
Uh, no, Nick and I are working on that now.
Okay, perfect. I just wanted to see if you had any.
But that's more of what I just changed the wording to, it's more, uh, accurate.
That was the spirit of the conversation.
Yes.
Okay. Thanks, Nick, I'll fix it.
Thank you.
On a motion?
Don't move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Comments from the floor, agenda items only. Cindy, do we have anyone with any comments yet?
No, we don't.
And, uh, just to let everybody know, um, the mayor notes that the last meeting, we opened up another way of getting, allowing people, and we're using a webinar function now, where people can actually raise their hand, uh, as they, as they join as an attendee. That's also been posted on the website, and also is on the agenda, and also on the village calendar. Uh, right now, there are no attendees. Mayor, you can see that, right? There's no attendees?
Yes, uh-huh. Thank you for mentioning that, yes, we, we did that.
So instead of, instead of, instead of just calling Cindy, you can always then also get on live on Zoom and ask your question that way, if anybody's listening.
Perfect, thank you. Yeah, I think, uh...
And who would, who would see the, uh, attendees raise their hands?
Everybody, I think everybody, uh, if on the, if you, if you pick on the, uh, bottom where it says, "Participants," or, uh, yeah, "Participants,"
Yeah.
If you click on that, you'll see a little box on your right, on your right-hand side of the screen, say, "Panelists, Attendees."
Did I just raise my hand?
You flipped.
On the right.
Uh, panelists, attend, attendees, zero, okay.
Yeah, now you see Theresa, yeah, Theresa raised her hand, took it down, so if Theresa wanted to run the meetings, a lot of people, people could raise their hand, and then Theresa can recognize them to speak. So a little bit more organized than just trying to call in Cindy.
Gotcha.
That's under "Participants"?
Uh, uh, yeah, you got "Participant" and "Attendees." So Participants can raise their hand, or Attendees can raise their hand as well.
Yeah, I don't see Attendees, I only have more.
Up at the top.
On the right-hand side, yeah, if you click on where it says...
We have "Participants."
On the bottom of your, on the bottom of the screen, where you see "Participants," when you click on that, you'll see a, a new window, uh, your, your screen should change a little bit. On the right-hand side, you'll see, uh, "Participants, ten," and then "Panelists, a ten," "Attendees, a zero."
Mine's a little bit different, but I see it.
Okay, good.
Oh, I get you.
All right? Yes.
Sorry to say.
No, no, that's okay, I'm glad you pointed that out.
It's good.
Um, also, Marcus had set this up for the Indian Point Decommissioning Meeting, and it worked well. We had, well, I'll talk about that later.
Yep, yep, okay, thank you.
Perfect, okay, I see.
Uh, under "New Business," "Appointment Of Officials," this is the annual appointments, and usually we do this April, but we remember that the election was much later this year, and so now we're doing the appointments. Um, it's, uh, official made by Mayor Theresa Nicabacher, except where otherwise indicated, pursuant to sections four dash four hundred, four dash four oh two, seven dash seven one two, and seven dash seven one eight of village law. All appointments are for one-year term, except where noted otherwise. So, under "Planning Board," Tracy Armisto, uh, till two thousand and twenty-five, Jennifer Bacher till two thousand and twenty-three, uh, Chairman, uh, is, uh, two thousand and twenty-one, and that's Sean Murray. Zone, and, uh, Zoning Board Of Appeals, Herman Bacher till two thousand and twenty-five, Chairman Gary Bell till two thousand and twenty-one, Village Clerk Treasurer Cynthia Kemter, Village Deputy Clerk Sharon Murphy, Village Attorney Stephanie Portius, Associate Village Judge Dan O'Neil, Court Clerk Part-Time Christine Torres, Recreation Supervisor Part-Time Nancy Bayer, Representative For The Senior Citizens Advisory Council Mike Lepore, Liaison To The St. Patrick State Parade Richard Function, Representative To The Historic Hudson River Towns Richard Function. On a motion?
Don't move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The following members of the Board Of Trustees are hereby appointed to the following committees for the ensuing official year two thousand and twenty to two thousand and twenty-one. Administrative Entire Board, Assessment Entire, Entire Board, Auditing Entire Board, Business Development Entire Board, Education Dwayne Jackson, Infrastructure Theresa Nicabacher, Legislative Entire Board, Parks, Recreation Nicholas Zachary, Public Safety Isla de Pasquale, Veterans Dwayne Jackson, and I added a, a K on here, it's, uh, Indian Point Decommissioning Task Force will be Richard Function. So these are my committee appointments, no vote is necessary on that. Okay, the next thing under "New Business" is, um, a motion to open a public hearing amending one sixty-three, seven dash two of the village code entitled "Imposition Of Dumpster Fees." On a motion to open the public hearing?
Don't move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, um, Stephanie, I'm going to have you, um, go over this, um, now that we're in the public hearing, and then we can, if there's any discussion, we'll, we'll discuss after.
Okay, basically, if you all remember, we just passed this law a couple of months ago, um, and then there was some confusion with some, um, property owners, and so what we're doing, the only thing we're doing here is, previously, we used the term "commercial establishment," and now we are replacing that with "property owner." So it becomes very clear that the cost for the dumpsters, um, is charged to the owner of the property, and not his or her tenants. And that's really the only change we're making.
Great.
Perfect. Any discussion or comments the board would like to make?
Nope. Sounds good.
All right. So I don't see, Cindy, you have no one that has called in to make any comments? There's nothing here under "Participants," so...
No.
On a motion to close the public hearing?
Don't move.
One, uh, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, so the next item is, uh, consider a motion to adopt local law number five?
Don't move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Passed. Um, I'm going to make a motion to accept the resignation of anti, Anthony Conti as of October twelfth, two thousand and twenty, and, uh, Anthony was our building inspector, and, uh, he resigned, and, um, this is to also authorize the mayor to sign the separation agreement as of October nineteenth, two thousand and twenty. On a motion?
Don't move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you. Um, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Peter Cook as the temporary part-time building inspector at forty-five dollars an hour.
Don't move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is, um, we're amending the master fee schedule, and, um, this is for special permits. We looked at neighboring municipalities and, um, wanted to be comparable, comparable to other surrounding areas, so we have, um, there's, um, we are adjusting the, the fees here. Um, so I guess I'll, I'll just go over this real quick. Up to four thousand feet, the, the, the initial, uh, fee would be three seventy-five, renewal fee of two fifty. From four thousand to ten thousand, the initial fee would be a thousand dollars, renewal fee would be three fifty, and over ten thousand, the initial fee would be three thousand, and the renewal fee would be fifteen hundred. So, on a motion?
Don't move.
Question?
Sure.
Uh, is there, on the renew, renewals, is that year by year, or how, how's that work now, just yearly renewed?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Wanted to make sure.
Sure. Let's see, we did a motion, we did a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The next motion is going to be, um, to authorize, um, the mayor to sign a renewal agreement with Han Engineering. Um, Han Engineering has been, uh, for many, many years, our engineer here in the village. Um, they have extensive knowledge of our infrastructure, they have extensive knowledge of our sewer treatment plant, and each year, we do a new agreement. And, um, I'm just going to read a few things. The max, maximum manual payment pursuant to this contract shall be fifty-five thousand dollars, unless there's an addition, an additional, additional project. What else would you like to include in this, Marcus?
No, I think this covered everything, and Theresa is absolutely correct. They, they've, they've been involved in repaving almost every single road. Um, everybody knows George Palmer, he knows every road off the, off the top of his head. He not only also, um, knows the sewer treatment plant very well, and works with Todd Travis and our, our head of the wastewater treatment plant, he knows every sewer line, every water line, so he's a, he's a substantial asset to have, have him at that amount, amount of money on a yearly basis, so I highly recommend that the village renew his agreement.
Sounds good.
I have a couple of, uh, questions on this.
Sure.
On page two, uh, there are a list of reimbursable expenses, and I'm going to suggest that we remove, uh, the third item, which says toll telephone calls, because any call in the, in the United States, now included on your, on your cellphone or your landline at no extra charge, and the only toll telephone calls, I think, would be if you were calling, um, you know, Borneo or something. So, so, you know, I don't think there's, in, in the continental United States, I don't think there's such a thing as a toll call, it's all on your plan.
And you're absolutely correct, and I don't, I don't think I've ever saw a bill with any calls on this bill, right, right, uh, Cindy? No, so, yeah, we can remove it, that's never been charged to us anyway, so I think it's just old, old, old language.
It's actually, oddly enough, it's outdated.
Yes.
Yeah.
As they say back in the day.
Exactly.
Back in the day, and actually, that's one improvement to all these new expensive phones we use. You don't have, everything is the same nationwide. Um, and one other thing on page five, and this is not a, uh, this is more of a question, uh, personal, just that I'm not sure of. Uh, it lists the hourly rate that we pay to various people, and the top three are all the principal, uh, which would be Mr. Han himself, uh, the Vice President, which I'm not sure where that is, and the Project Engineer. Uh, do we ever get billed for any of those top three lines? Because generally, I know we deal with George, um, who's the project, usually our project engineer and, uh, project designer as well, I think. Uh, do we ever get billed from those top three lines?
I think George might be the Vice President, uh, Cindy can pull out a bill if you want.
Yeah, I think George is a principal now, actually.
Oh, he might be the principal, okay.
Yeah, I think he is.
So when George, so when George is doing our, um, whatever, pumping station, or road work, or anything that he's called in to do, are we getting billed for him as an engineer, or are we getting billed for him as a, as a principal?
Cindy's looking up, I know, uh, Cindy's looking, and I know we also, there's a gentleman by, uh, we work with him, Will, that's been doing, uh, uh, this guy, Will, he's been working a lot on the sewer treatment plant, so...
Okay, and, you know, certainly before he was a principal, he was the engineer, so...
Right.
So does this motion mean we have, that we're paying him more? I'd like to know how we get billed.
George Palmer is at the one eighty-five.
So George is getting billed as Vice President?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, most of the time, it's Will, who's at, uh, ninety dollars.
Okay, so George is not always involved with every project now like he used to be?
No, he actually puts, uh, Will on, on the day-to-day stuff, the inspections and stuff like that, and then that's submitted to George for review and final inspection. So for example, yeah, so for example, the day-to-day stuff on the Fourth Street Pump Station, it was mostly Bell or William.
Right, or Miguel, Miguel's at a hundred, he's Inspector Two.
Yes.
Those are the names I know.
So except for his, uh, review or, uh, oversight with the, uh, engineers and project engineers, uh, that's, that's a smaller part of the hours, and mostly we're getting billed at the ninety or one twenty-five rate then.
That's correct, until like, for example, we had the final inspection, keep my fingers crossed, on the Fourth Street Pump Station from the, uh, on West S- Dec, and, and George, and he was there in that inspection, hopefully, and I think we got to approve this after the pump sign.
Yeah. Okay, okay. Thanks for the clarification, thank you.
Thank you, Cindy.
Okay. All right, so, on a motion?
Don't move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, um, the next motion is going to authorize the mayor to sign an agreement with the Village Buchanan Fire Department, and Stephanie, since you spent so much time on this, I'm going to, um, let you continue.
Okay, so I am happy to report that we actually have an agreement, uh, and it's a very comprehensive agreement with Buchanan Engine Company, which I think in, uh, council for the BEC also thinks protects both the Buchanan Engine Company and the village, and obviously, most importantly, the residents. Um, and I would like to say that, you know, I think I speak for everybody when I say that the village appreciates and is thankful for the Buchanan Engine Company, we're, you know, responding to calls for help, we're protecting the health and safety of the residents. And I'd also like to think, thank, uh, Tim Hannigan, who's counsel for Buchanan Engine Company, because he worked really hard, and, um, and we worked really well together to get this, this done. And so I think this is, um, the best we could do, and I think it protects everybody involved.
All right.
I'd like to add, thanks to you, Stephanie, because I know how much work you put into this, and, um, I read through, and it's just very comprehensive, and, um, um, you know, it's, it's good to have this paperwork in place. Thanks, thanks for all your work on this.
You're welcome.
Definitely, thank you, Stephanie, I know you put a lot of time into this, and, uh, we have a resolution to this, and, and, you know, we're all, we're all happy about that, and we're, we are thankful to have our own, uh, fire department here in the village. Not only do they respond to emergencies, as fires, accidents, they're, uh, one of the first groups on the scene with the police officer for our aided cases, but not only that, they're, they are a big part of our community. They do get involved in our Buchanan Day, they set up a table there, um, they bring Santa to our tree lighting, uh, ceremony at Christmas time, um, they, they, they just are a, a huge part of our, our community, so I'm, I'm glad that we could get this resolved and, and, um, you know, and, uh, just to let them know that, uh, we do appreciate everything that they do here in the village for us.
I second that.
Here, here, yeah.
On a mo, oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry, we, I thought you were finished, correct?
No, oh, no, I was just going to make the motion and to vote.
Well, just a, a quick thing, uh, I did see in there that the, um, uh, apparatus replacement plan is due March thirty-first, so I guess that involves the, um, uh, the, apparatus, uh, assessment committee, uh, I forget the exact name of it, that I will be, uh, working with. Um, is that something, should I reach out to them, uh, towards the, like, January or something, to get that started?
Yeah, I, I definitely would do that.
Okay, go like right...
I mean, I would assume, I would assume some years there won't be, uh, you know, a, a need for replacement, but you probably should calendar it and reach out. I don't know who their committee is, um, so maybe you could ask.
Yeah, okay, I'll check, who should, who do I check with? With the, uh...
I'll go to the chief first, and...
Yes, Jeff.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks. Um, and, and one other thing, item four refers to something, I don't, I just don't know what it is. What's firematic revenue?
Uh, you know, I'm not looking at it right now, so in what context are you talking about it?
Well, I, I don't have paper copy, it was online, I'm not looking at it right now, but there was a, uh, there was a section that referred to the, uh, revenue, um, accountability and stuff, and it used the term "firematic revenue." Does that just mean, um, equi, uh, rev, revenue for fire equipment, or I...
You know, I'm assuming, but I'm not looking at it. I mean, they raise their own money as well, and I'm, and I'm not sure whether that section was excluding, um, you know, they have their own bank account and their own revenue that they, that they make, and I, so I'm not sure whether that section was referring to, because we were calling for, you know, full accounting of all the, you know, the monies and how they spend it.
Yes.
What you did by the village and, and given by the village. So I'd have to look and get back to you.
Okay.
Because I don't have it in front of me, sorry.
It's a fun word, I like that word, "firematic."
Yeah, "firematic."
I'm going to practice using it in a sentence.
Oh, geez. Hey, hey, Steph, I, I have it in front of me, that would be, uh, you refer to it as "monthly bank account statements for all BEC firematic accounts."
Okay.
I hope that helps.
Go ahead, keep reading.
Oh, no, it, it starts, "In the event that the BEC does not submit the certified annual audit described above, the BEC shall, shall submit to the village the below-referred items on a monthly basis until each time is the most current year's audit submitted to the village board," and that's where you referenced, um, "firematic accounts," just to make...
Okay, so we are asking for, we are asking for all revenue. But Nick, you can keep trying to use "firematic" in a sentence.
I'm going to work on it.
"Firematic," wow, okay.
Um, one other thing I, I wanted to mention this year, we had a senior who turned a hundred, Josie Vavreck, on Bannon Avenue, and it, it was nice to see the fire department come out to help her celebrate, so, um, they, like I said, once again, they're a big part of our community, so, um, on a motion?
Don't move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
I'm going to abstain.
Okay, thank you. Dwayne is a, uh, member of the fire department. All right, thank you, Dwayne. Um, consider, okay, a motion to authorize the mayor to sign an agreement with AS Bell Engineering for professional services regarding the Village Buchanan Pool, uh, mechanical operations, and I am going to make a statement, I am disappointed that this, this, the fee on this is, is thirty thousand dollars, but I, I, I am kind of understanding the work that's involved to, um, to do this, and I'm going to, Marcus, you've been working on this, I'm, I'm going to turn this over to you, to, um...
Sure. So, thank you, thank you, Theresa. Um, uh, we, we had the, uh, engineer at the last board meeting, uh, the workshop, describe, uh, the necessary work that had to be done. As we know, we have some issues with the pool, we definitely have a leak, uh, we don't meet the current, um, health standards at the, uh, the, uh, the kiddie pool, so the idea is the thirty thousand dollars will be the total amount to do the, everything. The hopes are that we spend about five thousand dollars, and after Phase Two, they'll be able to give us some more better price-cost estimates, so the board can decide if we want to continue to move forward or not, and then we can continue with the phases. So the hopes are, we spend about five thousand dollars, get an idea what the project is going to be, the scope of the project is going to be, the cost, and also the timeline, and then we can have more discussion at that point, and we could decide to move forward or not. Uh, and one of the main things is to separate the main pool from the kiddie pool, and then decide, do we want to then have the kiddie pool up and running in the future, or just a big pool? So there's a lot of decisions have to be reached, but after, um, a couple of weeks of his review, we'll be able to have a discussion, another workshop, and discuss what the options are going to be, and the board can decide, with more information, decide what direction they're going to be in, and then you can see, hear from the public as well.
I have a few questions on this. Um, the thirty, to, let's make, get clear here, the thirty thousand dollars is only covering the engineering costs.
That's correct.
It should be like another hundred thousand dollars to fix the pool.
It could be a million dollars to fix the pool, we don't know.
We have no idea.
Right.
And, so, so we're, we're being charged five thousand dollars just to, for somebody to say what's wrong with the place.
And what it would take to fix it.
And what, but, but he's not going to give us, how, how much it's going to cost to fix it.
Yeah, no, he's going to give you estimate of cost, uh, that, um, based on his experience, and based on what the pool needs to be done, he'll be able to tell you it's going to cost ten thousand dollars to fix the pool, at his best-guest estimate, or a hundred thousand. You'll be, he'll be able to give you that number, and also give you options, to cut off the kiddie pool, this is what it'll be, to keep the kiddie pool up and operational, that's how much it's going to be. So you're going to have a couple of different options, with a couple of different price estimates, that you can decide which direction you want to go in.
How did we get this guy? Was it, was it put out to bid?
He, he was actually, he was the only engineer, um, we tried, reached out to five different engineering companies that work on municipal pools, he was the only one that came in, and actually, George Palmer recommended him, but he worked on the Dobbs Ferry Pool, and he was, and also, he worked on a couple municipal pools. He was the only one that actually responded to our, to our reaching out. Bob tried to call a couple of companies, so did I, and everybody said they were too busy, everybody's working on their pools, everybody's doing their pools, he was the only one willing to come in, and he actually came highly recommended from George Palmer as well. And he was, I think he was doing us a favor for George, to give him this time to even come to take a look at that place, he said was extreme, he was extremely busy as well.
Is there any way that we can find out whether these fees are reasonable? I mean, you know, in other words, you know, you want to put a deck on your house, and somebody comes along and says, "Well, I'll do it for this amount," you're going to go around, ask friends and neighbors or what have you, "Well, is that a reasonable amount, or are we, are we going to, is, uh..."
Uh, uh...
You know, I'm, I'm going back, I'm going back to the thing on the overlay zone. We got charged nine thousand dollars for something which, all I saw was a bunch of pictures, and, and, eh, something that the average person could have done themselves, and now we're going to pay five thousand dollars, it's like taking your car to a mechanic, and he's going to charge you money to tell you what's wrong with it. You're paying the mechanic to do the, to fix the thing.
Yeah, let me, let me touch on, on both items that you raised. Uh, the nine thousand dollars include the whole secret process, right into, uh, local law, which if we haven't done yet, that's also included in the nine thousand dollars. So we're not done yet, and he's going to get to you doing work on that, um, but going back to this one...
On the overlay district.
On the overlay district, yeah, so the overlay district is not done yet, so that's a, that's a little bit separate, but we're going into this. I wish I was able to give you other estimates on the pool, the promise, no, no one, no one else was willing to give us, even to come to talk to us, to take a look at the pool. That's the problem.
Hey, can I just interject something? With, when we use our engineer, and we have a project that requires, I don't know, you know, if you can think of a project that required roughly the same amount of time? The Fourth Street Pump Station, perhaps, and all that work, did that require, uh, roughly the amount of time that this, all this pool work required? Are those comparable in size? And if so, you know, we could look at how much we paid for engine, for the engineer in the cour- course of that project. Uh, the pump station project, you know, the total engineering costs over the course of that whole project could probably add up close to that. I, I think.
I, I think on the Fourth Street Pump Station, I think, Cindy, I think it's like forty thousand, fifty thousand dollars on engineering.
I was just gonna.
Somebody's gonna oversee the whole project, plan it out. Because the people that come in are more of a tr- uh, tradespeople, and you need the engineer overseeing them. And I would also point out that, for example, I, having been a draftsman in, in a past, in one of my past lives, have done drawings for work on my house. And just to get an engineer or an architect to sign off on drawings that you do, even if you don't ask them to do drawings, can cost you multiple thousands of dollars. Just to sign the drawing that you did. So, uh, engineers are a specialty. They're not cheap.
So Nick, are you saying that the five thousand is reasonable?
Uh, well, uh, I don't remember exactly what the fir- the fi- oh, the five thousand is, um.
Basically telling us what we need to get done.
For the first phase. I, I don't, um, phase one is the study portion. You saw those hourly rates in the HAN contract.
It was, it, yeah, it's phase one and phase two to get you, like I said, it's not just one, one cost estimate. You're gonna have three, at least three different cost estimates with timelines, everything tied into it.
Yeah. I think it's a lot of money, but I don't think it's like outrageous, given what professionally your engineering costs.
Okay.
You know, it, it's a lot of money, and obviously we have to be concerned with, that it's a lot of money, but as a, uh, uh, as somebody that's specialized, this is a guy who's specialized in pools and engineers, and you saw in the HAN contract, what kind of hourly rates. Um, you know, you, that, that money could add up quick.
And, and Teresa knows this, he also has to work with the county department of health on this too, so. And they're short-staffed, and there's a lot of time and effort, and that's just their work, work with the department of health too, to give you some rough numbers in regards to how long that would take as well.
So they would ov- they would oversee the whole job, is that it?
For the thirty, for the thirty thousand dollars will be fin- finished construction and everything else. So, we're not, we're nowhere near that number yet.
So Marcus, one thing I don't see in this paperwork is, um, a timeline. Uh, uh, is there any, uh, time limitation? Is this price good for one year? Is this price good for five years, if we happen to take that long? I don't see, I don't see any dates in this.
Yeah, I'll double-check the timeline. I think the timeline is also contingent on the department of health timeline as well, to do the project.
If it just takes two years, it's not like, it's not like he's gonna say that, that this price is contingent on fini- completion within one year or something.
No.
Okay.
No. He, he thinks, you know, every department, depending on how long it takes the department of health, it could take two years depend, depending on their approval process and what, and what you decide to go. If you go, decide to redoing the kiddie pool and the big pool, that could take two years, two and a half years. And that price, it's the same price to do the entire project.
Well, he, he's, he's putting a proposed assumptions on the back, so I guess that kinda speaks a little bit to the time period.
Mm-hmm.
And here's another thing. Once you have this, once you have a report from this guy, from this engineering firm, you then have, uh, a backbone to go out and apply for grants.
Correct.
Apply for grant money, you can't just say, we wanna fix up our pool, give us a million dollars. You gotta go in with an engineer's assessment and report. And so, so, um, you know, that's something that you would need to, to, uh, to help you get grant money.
Yes, that's correct.
Available, yeah, yeah.
Well, it's all part of the picture.
All right. I, I just, you know what, I think when we started this process, because we have to start this process, there's work that needs to be done on the pool. A lot of work hasn't been done since it was installed in the seventies. There's been a water leak there for years, and we're, we're just at a point now where we, we really need to address some things. And I, I think it was just the sticker shock of potential, uh, thirty thousand dollars just for engineering. And, you know, and then that doesn't even start to, to cover the cost of when the, you know, when the pool work gets done, so. Um, yeah, sticker shock, I think, that's what it was.
Yeah. Aging infrastructure and, and sticker shock.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, let's, those grant applications going.
Yeah, yeah, I'm not sure. They're, they're kind of, they're kind of dri- drying up a little bit, uh.
Yeah.
Lot of, uh, money out there right now. So, but we'll, we'll look. We'll, we'll put Marcus on the trail. We'll look.
We'll see.
Okay. Yeah, because he had so much fun doing the last grant application. On a motion?
On move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And that was, uh, to sign an agreement with AS Bell and, Bell Engineering for professional services regarding the Village Buchanan Pool mechanical operations. Okay, the next thing on our agenda is to adopt the intermunicipal agreement with Westchester County for Mutual Aid and Rapid Response Plan for the Police Department within Westchester County. It's a five-year plan, so, uh, we've done this before. Uh, this will go from twenty twenty to twenty twenty-five. Um, just gonna read a few things of the, whereas the purpose of the Mutual Aid and Rapid Response Plan for the police departments of Westchester County, um, I believe, in the agreement here. Of course, you can never find the page when you need it. So, um, okay, "The cost of police services provided pursuant to this agreement shall be paid by the requesting municipality, subject to the following exceptions. The police services provided by the county shall be without cost to the requesting municipality. B, the police services provided by each assisting municipality shall be reimbursed as provided in Section two oh nine M of the General Municipal Law, as same as may be amended, except paragraph A." So, basically, if we had an incident, we, we've had situations where we've had to rely on, um, uh, mutual aid. Other communities, county have come in to, uh, to help us. The county, we don't pay for, but other municipalities, we would have to reimburse them for fees. Is that correct, Marcus?
Correct.
That's for the state troopers as well?
This is an agreement between us and Westchester County.
Right, no, I'm just going back to what you said. If they, if another municipality would come in and help, we'd have to reimburse them.
No, geez, that would be like Pete's Gill or, or, or Villas Croton or something like that. State police is all covered as part of the state tax. Don't worry about state police, just local police departments.
That's what I thought. That's why I was a little confused. Okay.
That's a good question. That's a good question.
Yep.
Okay, on a motion?
On move.
Second?
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Um, I have a question. I, I, we need to add something onto the agenda. Do I have to make a motion to add letter K onto the agenda?
Yes.
Okay, all right. I'd like to make a motion to add, um, accepting the sale of surplus equipment onto the agenda under letter K. On a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Okay, going back month or a couple of months ago, we had some surplus equipment. And we, um, we voted on putting it out to bid. And, um, so tonight, um, we are going to vote to accept the bid, um, if the board so chooses to do so. Um, on there, it was a Lesco thirty-six inch walk-behind mower. Um, that's a hundred and fifty-five dollars. Now, remember, all of this equipment, we, we, we use our equipment right to the bitter end. I mean, we really get our money's worth out of absolutely every piece of equipment we've ever used, and it, it was time to put this stuff out to pasture. A two thousand three Chevy Silverado truck, twenty-five hun- the twenty-five hundred series, that is two thousand five hundred and fifty. A nineteen ninety-eight Mack garbage truck, that's eight thousand six hundred dollars. A two thousand one Crown Victoria four-door police car, four hundred and ten dollars. A nineteen ninety-one Chevy truck, three hundred and twenty dollars, for a total of twelve thousand thirty-five dollars. Any comments, questions?
One question.
Sure.
It's, in every case, the, uh, items on the auction site show a minimum bid, and in every case, the, um, current bid that's shown is like ten dollars or so le- five or ten dollars less than that. What up with that?
I, I, I have no idea. Those are the bids that came in. I guess people was trying to, um, see what's the best price they could get, and that was, that was the highest bid.
Experienced bidders must know that, uh, if you come in ten dollars under the minimum bid, that it'll be accepted, but if you come in fifty dollars under the, I mean, there must be some.
Yeah. Or somebody, or somebody, or some, you know, somebody, I'll, I'll bid you. I, I don't know. It's an open bid. Everybody can see what other people bid, and and then every, everybody just goes on and puts whatever they want.
I just wanna tell the residents of the village, you know, eat your heart out. For eighty-seven hundred bucks, you could have had your own garbage truck. Too late, too late.
You know what they say, snue you lose.
How come you didn't buy it, Nick?
Because you wouldn't let me keep it in your driveway.
Hey. So, any other questions on this, um, comments before we go to vote?
No, gotta make, get rid of the old stuff, otherwise it just sits around and rusts.
And that's true. Okay, on a motion?
On move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
That's fine.
Moving on to information from officers and departments. Uh, justice court reports for September twenty twenty. Uh, one of the amounts was one thousand six hundred and twenty-eight, and another amount was two hundred dollars that was collected from the court. Okay, justice court refu- uh, report received and filed. Police report, September twenty twenty. Uh, moving summons is twenty-three. Total calls, a hundred and sixty-eight. Parking summons is eighteen. And what I wanna point out on this one is medical aided cases, there's fifteen of those. So when there, the ambulance gets called, our officers are usually first on the scene, um, because they're out on the road in the village, and the ambulance corps is, you know, getting, getting their stuff together. They're here very quickly, but usually our officer is on the road and is one of the first, uh, first people to show up on a scene.
May I comment on this? Uh, there's on, on the village code violation line, there are seventeen, uh, uh, cases. Uh, Marcus, do you have any info on what the village code violations, these seventeen were, what types of things?
I'll have a detail, but I can get, I can get that to you.
Okay, I think it'd be good, I'd kinda like to, uh, maybe the next hearing, just sort of review what those things are.
Sure.
So for the six people or so that are watching this meeting, they get a little, uh, update on the village code enforcement.
Sure, no problem.
You, you know what also jumps out at me on this one? We had seven arrests total. That's a lot for one month. Seven arrests are a lot, and none of them were drug-related. Well, just throwing it out there.
All right, thank you.
Could that be, could that be, um, you know, keep, on the driving stuff, DWI or something?
Yeah, it could be. I'm just curious what it is. I'll, I'm, I'm gonna, I'll ask about that, because I'm curious.
Yeah, uh, geez, if I could do a, can I, quick, a quick detail on that, get you a guy's, uh, email tomorrow and the next day, give you some details.
Yeah, sure. I can stop in and see them. I, I, I could stop in and see the guys.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, so that's received and filed. Planning Board minutes, December nineteenth, two thousand and nineteen. Somehow this one got, uh, misplaced.
Oh, no, they, they didn't meet for, they didn't meet for, they, that was, they, Benny Metz, December was the last meeting before, there was nothing on the agenda for a couple of months, then COVID hit. So they couldn't approve them to the last meeting, which was last month.
All right, all right. Thank you.
No problem.
So that's received. We have the zoning board minutes, September ninth, twenty twenty. Those are received and filed. Highway, highway report, uh, for September of twenty twenty. Received and filed. And wastewater treatment plant, September twenty twenty. I spoke to, um, Todd Travis, who is our, uh, village wastewater operator over there, and, uh, he said the DEC was in the other day, and we got a, we got a really good report. I thanked him. He's doing a great job over there. Um, just so people know, the, for the month of September, there were six million seven hundred and fifty-two five hundred and eighteen gallons of treated wastewater. And the sludge that was removed was fifty thousand five hundred, fifty-five thousand five hundred. Um, he shows all the lab reports that have been submitted, so things are, things are doing good over there, but he still is having a concern with the wipes. Um, so just as a reminder, everyone, when you go into the stores, they have these wipes, and they say they're flushable. They are not. They can jam up your sewer system, and they're a problem for our sewer, um, our wastewater plant. It causes problems over there. So please, do not flush the quote-unquote wipeable flushes. So the wipeable, the flushable.
Flushable wipes.
The opposite way, didn't I?
Flushable wipes.
Say that ten times, Sam. So do not, okay, let's see if I can get it right this time. Do not flush the wipeable, the flushable wipes.
Flushable wipes.
I'm stuck on that, but anyhow, you got the point.
You had it go there.
Okay, don't flush them. Just take my word for it. Don't do it.
And I, I just popped that six million seven hundred fifty-two thousand gallon figure in, and that comes out to three thousand gallons per resident.
Wow.
Wow.
Per month.
Each month, yeah.
Divided by twenty-three hundred.
Wow, yeah. So, it's a, it's a busy plant.
About three thousand gallons a month.
Okay.
A lot of water.
Yes. All right, thank you. Thanks for those numbers, Nick. Uh, let's see, we're moving along to attorney's report.
Uh, all I have is that we have several applicants in front of the zoning board. We have somebody in front of the planning board. So things are moving along there. And the other things I have relate to personnel, and will be discussed in executive session.
All right. Thank you, Stephanie. And thanks for all your hard work. There's a lot of things going on, and I know we'll, we'll get through all this. Um, administrator's report. Mr. Marcus, what do you have for us tonight?
Uh, sure, as the, as Teresa said before, we're still waiting on the Pavilion, uh, grant. Um, it's still in processing by the state DASNY. Uh, and also, Nick did ask a question to me a couple of days ago. We're still also waiting for the sidewalk grant for Route nine A. Uh, that's still pending with the DOT. Uh, as far as I know, we've provided all the information that both agencies wanted regarding both grants. We're still waiting for them to get back to us. I'm getting a little nervous due to the COVID. There's some, there's some background noise there. The governor might hold back on any grants awards for the foreseeable future. So, uh, but the final decision has not been given to me to say neither one of those grants have been withdrawn in regards to the, to the amount being released. But they both have been submitted. It's, it's been, the building's a little bit over a year right now. But every time we try to give them information, they want more. So we've been giving them everything they've needed. So those two grants are still pending, still up in the air. The only good news, per se, good news on the sidewalk grant is that we work for the DOT, just to remind everybody. They created almost a little path that people can hopefully walk safely around nine A from the gas station to the sidewalk going towards, uh, Blakely Avenue. Uh, they created a little path there off the road that people could walk on. And I, I've seen going to work and leaving work, I saw a lot of people actually are using that pathway. They'll, they'll be better protected with a sidewalk, and hopefully that grant will be awarded. So those two grants are still pending, want everybody to know that. Um, with entity resignation, uh, just want everybody to know that we do have two part-time building inspectors now, um, available. So they're both, um, uh, out there now doing inspections and catching up with stuff that we're a little bit behind a little bit, but I think they're doing a good, a good job catching up with that. So, um, please, uh, if you have any issues, you can reach out to my office or the building inspectors. They're both there now working, which is good news. I think we'll get a little bit more hours with two part-timers from now. So that's working, that's working well. Um, besides that, I don't have anything else unless anybody has any questions for me.
Yeah, Marcus, uh, on the, uh, fire code, uh, enforcement, how we, how we working with that?
Yeah, that's gonna, that's on the list with the fire inspections, as well as grease trap inspections. Right now, we were a little backlog on, as everybody, I, I think everybody knows, the real estate market is very hot right now. A lot of houses are selling, and there's a lot of re-inspections required. There was, as everybody knows, we have a law which requires an inspection before sale of a house. Um, we were backlogged on that. Uh, we're trying to catch up with that, but that's time before the essence, because there's pending sales. So as soon as that's caught up, uh, the next step is to, uh, get out there with the fire inspections. And with the part-time building inspectors, we're actually working around people's time. Like, a lot of times, it has to be after hours, or maybe on Saturday. So we're working that out as well. So that's on the list, as well as grease trap inspections. They have to be done too. They have not been done. So we're trying to catch up with those inspections. Thank you for that question.
And one other question on our, uh, you know, we're talking about delinquent taxes from real estate. Uh, how are we doing with that?
Uh, on most, uh, the, as we discussed, uh, there's, there was a discussion about starting a foreclosure proceedings for people that have not paid their taxes. Um, as people do sell the house, they are actually, uh, are paying out. We've had, I don't want to specifically say the property, but we had a substantial payment of a piece of property that didn't pay taxes, but the property was sold, so all those taxes were reimbursed to the village, so we actually received those funds. So, um, but there are a couple and handful of properties that have not paid their taxes, and we need to discuss the foreclosure proceedings. Again, Stephanie has been doing a great job, we, we just discussed the fight agreement. Um, also, we're working on the sewer agreement with wastewater for the school district, that's been taking a number of months as well. And we're finalized, we're happily, I think we have that finalized as well, and then we get that out of the way. And then, you know, depending what the priorities are, then we gotta talk to Stephanie, that's the next step that you want to handle. Um, but definitely, as properties sell, they actually do pay their taxes. So we got a substantial payment a couple of weeks ago, and hopefully that will continue happening.
So the, the numbers have gone, are coming down, is what you're saying?
That's correct, that's, yes.
Thank you, Marcus, I, I know those grants are time consuming, and, and the, the grant especially for the Pavilion has been just nothing but a back and forth, back and forth, back and forth, this thing just, just blossomed really. So, um, thank you for following through on that, and hopefully the state will find some money. Right now, I believe it's $16 billion in debt, so, um, yeah. Oh, okay, oh, you know what, I just want to say something, I, I do have somebody in the chat box, and I think this is a really good suggestion. I, I think it has been in our, uh, our flyer once before. Um, it says, maybe you can put a flyer on the monthly letter for a few months in a row to provide info on no flushing wipes. So, yes, thank you, I, I think we have to keep, keep saying this, keep saying this, so that people understand. Um, we had that problem, unfortunately, with that backup, and that was a huge part of it on, on 4th Street, with those, uh, non-flushable wipes, so.
Hey, Teresa, that, that's a good thing you might want to mention too, a lot of people, that chat room that we, we didn't even discuss that the last time, too, people could use that too.
That's perfect, yes, thank you for, for putting your chat up there, thank you. Okay, so, I guess it's my turn. Um, tomorrow is Veterans Day, um, I had this, I'm gonna read this to you, I had this posted on the Village Facebook page today. "On Veterans Day, we honor those men and women who have served our country, we thank them for their service and sacrifice. In the Village of Buchanan, we do our part, we do our part to support our veterans in need by collecting food and donating to the VA Food Pantry. Thank a veteran not only today, but every day of the year. A big thank you to all our veterans, home of the free, because of the brave."
Thank you.
Yes, indeed, thank you for that.
Um, last week, we, uh, had, uh, one of our Indian Point decommissioning meetings. Um, Entergy gave us an update, an overview of what's going on since the closure of IP2 this year. IP3 is scheduled to close, um, to cease operations in April of next year. Um, so we are also working on a schedule with Holtech, um, hopefully, hopefully we can, um, get them in December, because by the end of the year, the NRC has said that they will, um, you know, there's a discussion on whether they're going to approve the, uh, license transfer from Entergy to Holtech. Um, so we're, I'm trying to work on a meeting December or January to get them in, and so we can discuss some things with them. Um, there were approximately 63, was it about 63 participants on the call, Marcus?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, and I, I really, I really have to thank Marcus, I mean, he is like the Zoom wizard, okay? He, he set this up and he's really kept us, kept us, uh, doing well with the Zoom. And then, you know, with the, the, uh, panelists, it was the, the Indian Point thing last week, that was even, you know, there were like, how many, about 25, 26 panelists plus, and more attendees?
Teresa, I don't know how you did it, 25 panelists and then about 65 attendees, and you kept control, so that was a great job.
They were good, they were good, they were, they were professional, they, 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 you know, um, there was no, everybody was respectful. And that's, that's what has to happen at these meetings, there's so much information that has to come out. They have, we have to be respectful to one another, so we can get this information, we can't start doing all this other stuff. So, you know what, it was, it, I think the meeting was good, we got a lot of good information out of it. So, we will post when the next meeting comes up, um, I do want to say-
I'm sorry, Teresa, I'm, I'm sorry, I just want to mention that the, uh, the meeting, the YouTube link is on the, uh, our website, and also the, uh, the presentation's on the website too, if people want to see it.
Okay, good, and is it on the Indian Point, uh?
Yes, the CAP, yes, exactly.
And it's on the TV screen if anybody gets the picture.
Yes.
Okay, well, how is, you know, I'm just gonna break for a minute, how is that, that going with our, um, our public access channel?
Uh, we actually got an email, I actually got an email from Cablevision last week, they actually bought new equipment. They put in direct line for the village bypassing the school, so they had to run a brand-new line from our village hall to their main hub in Austin. They did that, and the equipment was ordered, and they say it should be coming in anytime now, as soon as that's connected, I'll let you guys know, and the channel will be up, up and running again.
Wonderful.
The issue was, the issue was the connection at the school, so we had no control over that.
People have been asking about that, they like to see the meetings on our public access channel also. Um, Marcus, could you also mention, um, uh, we had a, um, a resident today that was concerned about the, um, stopping of the construction with ConEd's transferring the poles and the wires on Albany Post Road and Lindsay Avenue, I know you wanted to comment on that too.
Sure, no problem, uh, they had a subcontractor working there, putting the, uh, they had to do some overhead lines as well as some underground wiring, uh, and anybody saw the subcontractor working on underground, that was just completed, and the ConEd's then had to come back to put more of their underground wiring themselves and overhead posts. So that site is still under construction, uh, I don't have a time, I do not have a timeline yet, I want it to be completed, uh, but the concern about the wires being a little lower, and also the posts not being totally sealed around the bottom, that's still under construction, that will all be resolved when the construction is completed. And I, I submitted those concerns through ConEd's, and they said they understand that, but they can't work on that until their process is completed, but they are, they know they're working there. I think today, I think there was like three or four trucks working there, and they were all ConEd's and trucks working, so I think they're getting close to the end.
Okay, good, yeah, because, you know, we'd like to see that get done sooner than, rather than later, because there's some issues with the poles that are there also, so.
Yep, mm-hmm.
Um, just want to give everyone an update, we are seeing an increase with the virus, um, positive numbers in the village, as we also are through the county, um, so, uh, just, uh, like last Wednesday, there were three people, Friday was one, today I believe there was another one, there, so we're seeing an uptick, um, maybe, maybe it's because there's, there's more disability testing, you know, but, uh, just as a reminder, the virus is still present, please, you know, do the social distancing, please, wear your mask. You know, we'll get through this, it's just, you know, the virus isn't done yet, so let's just be careful out there. Um, we did have a wonderful Halloween, uh, now, it was done socially distanced, the, uh, the groups were kept in fam, you know, they were in family groups, um, you know, here I'm telling you, in one, in one breath, I'm telling you the social distance and everything, but we, we did maintain that at this Halloween, uh, event that we had, um, on Halloween afternoon, and it was great. Um, so many smiling faces, the kids were just, they, they were so happy, the big kids were good too, they came in their costumes too. But I know I had talked to one of our residents, uh, before this, Megan, Megan Starchka, and she, uh, she had mentioned if we were gonna do anything for Halloween, because you know what? The kids really have lost out on a lot of things this year, and it's been hard for the kids. So I, I just think, you know, everybody was happy with this, it was a great event, and, um, we're gonna try to do some more fun things before the end of the year. Um, you also know, uh, you should have seen in the newsletter, we have a Thanksgiving raffle for Thanksgiving turkey. So, um, Cindy, when is the date, is it the 16th that the, the, um, the letters are due? Just as simple, you don't need to do a 20-page letter, just, you know, submit it to the village, what am I grateful for? Um, the kids can do it, any family members, anybody can do that, and we're going to do a, a drawing for turkey. We have, um, we have 10 now, if we need to do more, we'll do more. But, um, so I think that would be kind of a fun thing, and no, I'm not going out to buy 10 turkeys. So what we'll do for you instead is we'll give you a, a gift card, and then you can, you can go purchase your turkey. So I think that'll be fun, because, you know what, um, we're all here, we're all healthy, and you know what? We've got many things, all of us have many things to be grateful for. Um, Christmas time, right now, tentatively, let's see where we are with the virus, and if we can do the social distancing. We would like to still do the tree lighting, we will not have anything back at the village hall. Um, so, tentatively, we are going to do the tree lighting. Um, but also, we are going to do this year a holiday lighting decoration, uh, contest. So I, I believe Nancy, our recreation supervisor, will be, um, will be doing the judging. So anybody, you know, just get your decorations out there, and I think it could be like a fun thing for the whole village, you know, and then, you know, we could all go around, see everybody's decorations and stuff. But the winners will receive gift cards for that, so something fun to look forward to. And I do want to give a shout out to our recreation supervisor Nancy, she did a great job organizing the Halloween parade. Um, we had, oh my gosh, I think it was over, over 150 kids, and they, they started to run out of candy. There was so many kids that were there, it was a beautiful day, and Trustee Pasquale was there with me, he didn't have his costume on, but he was there. So, but it was a beautiful day, and it was good to see him.
Are you sure?
And you know what? He came incognito. That's all I have for right now, um, let's start, let's start with Trustee Pasquale then, let's start there. Yes, sir.
Teresa, I came, I, I, I came as the brother.
Oh.
You didn't, you didn't get it?
I got it now, I'm a little-
I came as my twin brother. Anyway, um, the, um, um, I, I was just gonna say a lot of what you just said about Nancy, and, and what a wonderful job she did with that Halloween parade, I mean, with social distancing, distancing was great, there was a lot of kids, a lot of adults. And what I saw, which was kind of cool, a lot of kids who dressed as police officers, I love that, clap to those guys. Um, also, uh, with tomorrow being Veterans Day, um, you know, thank you to all of our, our, our veterans for everything they've done. And, um, a lot of us can probably say that, um, we've know, we know a veteran, and we, we carry a piece of them with us to thank them for everything they've done for this country and serving in the greatest military in the world. And, um, also a happy and safe Thanksgiving to everyone. All right, I don't think we'll, uh, we'll be live, uh, we'll have a, a, a workshop, but I'll say now, happy Thanksgiving to everybody, keep safe.
Thank you, Chief, very nice.
You're welcome, you're welcome.
Deputy Mayor, thank you, Deputy Mayor.
Uh, thank you, um, I don't have too much, really, I, I teach, if I teach, I think it was, uh, great to be, uh, always there on Veterans Day, and it's a shame we can't have something, but, uh, you know, the virus has taken our place. And, uh, I think all the vets know how much they're appreciated, uh, especially those who are overseas right now, or those that are gonna look, not look forward to, but have to spend their time overseas, uh, away on Thanksgiving and or Christmas. And I want to wish everybody a great Thanksgiving, and be, be careful. I, you know, this morning, Dr. Fauci was saying that probably the, the biggest, uh, problem now with the virus is that most of the, uh, infections are coming from family gatherings or, or small parties. And I think what it is, is that, uh, we, as family, when we have, have a family here, we let down our, you know, defenses, thinking, oh, they, we know them, or they're, it's a friend, or over for dinner and everything, and, uh, it's, everybody's gonna have to make their own individual decisions on Thanksgiving, but they should give it some thought, especially if they're gonna have families coming from far away, that, uh, we don't want to, as, as relatives or, or put any pressure on our other relatives to say, oh, you're not gonna be here for Thanksgiving, everybody's gotta make their own decision. But, uh, hopefully, we will be, have something to thank, be thankful for next Thanksgiving, because this is a tough one to be saying thanks when, uh, we're fighting this virus. And, uh, Mayor, I want to thank you for all the work you're doing, I know you really got your head going crazy with all the committees you have, all the, and the Zooming, which we, new language we have now, Zooming. Uh, I mean, if we told you you were Zooming about five, eight years ago, people would go, well, we always knew she was crazy.
I am, this could make me a little crazier, that's all. Thank you.
And, you know, and hopefully, everybody has enjoyed the last few days, which, uh, Mr. Summer was almost coming back here for a while. And, uh, all the best for Thanksgiving, have a, have a great Thanksgiving, and thank, thankful to God for our families and our friends that are still with us. That's all.
Thank you, Rich, very nice. Trustee Jackson?
Nice.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, first of all, going back to the disposable, not disposable wipes, um, you know, as I've always, always say, you know, curb your dog, make sure you pick up the pool and keep it moving, and don't throw it down in our sewer system, uh, and be mindful of stuff that does indeed go in our sewer system. So actually, just keep the sewer system clean, and if you see some, you know, a lot of people out walking now or whatever, and I, I do the same thing, and if I see some stuff on the curb, I kind of pick it up and hold it until I can put it in a receptacle and, uh, take care of that. Uh, going, uh, back to, you know, Veterans Day tomorrow, actually, there's a, a great program that's, uh, orchestrated out of the Montrose VA for veterans and the Metropolitan PGA, where veterans are taught the game of golf and, uh, uh, continue to play the game of golf, and a lot of the local, uh, country clubs participate in letting golfers, uh, letting veterans play a round of golf free and sometimes with lunch in the metropolitan area. And I was actually with about 12 guys today down at the Metropolis Golf Course in, uh, White Plains, and a good time was had by all, so it's just one of the, uh, the things that the community, the golf community, and, uh, community as a whole does for, uh, for golfers. Uh, well, again, like everyone else, uh, have a happy Thanksgiving, and, uh, we should indeed all be counting our blessings, and a final note, uh, that we always say in the veterans community, freedom is not free, and it is never free, and there are those who are in, uh, buried in faraway places that gave us the freedom we have today. Thank you.
Thank you, Dwayne, and Dwayne, Dwayne is a veteran, so Dwayne, thank you for your service.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Trustee Zachary, oh yes, I saved the best for last.
A few things, so one thing is just a little pet peeve of mine, gas prices. It always seems that the couple of local stations here always charge 20 or 30 cents more per gallon than stations in the area. So for people, if you're driving down towards Croton, it's always 20 cents less, sometimes 30. I paid $2.13 a gallon last week, and it's generally about $2.49 over here. I don't know what it is, I can't imagine that they're paying more for the deliveries or taxes here, and that pushes up the price. So I think it's just that the couple of local stations don't see a reason to low, lower their prices. If you're going north, you're gonna find cheaper gas, if you're going south to Croton, cheaper gas, whichever way you're going. If you're going out to BJ's, also very cheap. Uh, very close by, go up the, go up Wiltshire Avenue to Washington Street, the gas station there is usually 20 cents less than the mobile station down the hill. So, um, you know, as a consumer, you don't have to go too far, if you're going in almost any direction, and most people probably know this already, you, you could pay less for gas. Um, I'd like to just, a little update on the LWRP, which is the Local Waterfront Revitalization Plan. Uh, the, um, advisory committee did have a, uh, a, a meeting a couple of weeks ago, and the main, um- And the main thing that was, was discussed was a survey for public sentiment. That survey is posted on the town and on the village websites. LWRP, Local Waterfront Revitalization Plan. If you click on that link on the town or village website, the survey will be up until this Friday. That's the last day that it will be, that you can enter the, your, your opinions for this survey having to do with what you'd like to see for future development and improvements throughout the town of Cortland and the Village of Buchanan, along the river waterfront and the inland areas around it. It's, it's not just the coast, it's the whole area that feeds into the coast. Thus far, the predominant sentiments as far as how to use land along the river and what to do were anti-industrial. People generally do not want to see industrial development. People want to see, the general things that people want to see are the, are recreation, open space and mixed-use development. Mixed-use being typically what you're seeing up and down the Hudson these days in various places. Of course, a big thing going on is Sleepy Hollow now with the old GM site. Mixed-use meaning restaurants, businesses, pedestrian-friendly, open space, residential, all mixed. So again, if you have until Friday, I'd love to have people, there was, I think, there was a little over a hundred people did fill out the Buchanan part of the survey. There's a short part of the survey, take you about a minute. And then there's more detailed parts of the survey for various parts of the, of the Westchester coastline, the Cortland-Buchanan coastline. Specific ones, one for Lenz Cove, for the Lenz Cove area, one for Verplank area. There's specific ones that you can spend as much time with them, do, do all of them, do one of them, whatever you like. But at least do the short part of the survey. And if you're from Buchanan, fill out the, the more detailed Buchanan part of the survey. There were about a hundred people that did answer that, that part of the survey. I'd also like to update on the overlay zone, which the board is reviewing and considering for the nine A commercial corridor. At the last workshop, some questions were brought up about protecting, you know, there, there, there will be a three-story allowance with the overlay zone. And there was a little concern about what if a three-story house is suddenly put right next to somebody's private house? That could be a little overwhelming. And so we were looking for ways to mitigate the effects on private homes. I did review this with the, with our planner, David Stolman. And, and he had some good suggestions and we came up with, first of all, the, the, an acre, which is a little over forty thousand square feet. We, we've increased the allowance for townhouses in this overlay zone, or we proposed to. That for properties between twenty-five thousand square feet and forty thousand square feet, twenty-five thousand square feet is, it's a little more than half an acre, maybe about five-eighths of an acre, somewhere in there. A little, little, a little less than that maybe. So rough, just over half an acre. For properties between that, twenty-five thousand and forty thousand, the number of allowable units would be prorated. This is, he's, he's working, David is rewriting that into the draft, so the board should all see that soon if we haven't seen it already. I don't think we have seen it yet. And that you cannot go to three stories if the property is under twenty-five thousand square feet. So that means somebody with one of those small houses, there are like six houses in a row close to each other or the private homes across from Rowlindo, somebody can't take one of those houses and try to put a third story on it. Because it's not, you would have, you would need about four of those lots to get, you'd have to buy up about four or five of those lots to get to the size where you could build three stories. And then also, we talked about possibly protecting by requiring more of a setback. So you can't just, in a little lot next to another little house, you can't just put up another house. You gotta have a bigger lot and you have to have a larger setback. And we'll see those details soon. And I trust that's on the agenda for our next workshop. I'd like to keep that moving so we can discuss it again at the next workshop. And finally, I just want to mention regarding Veterans Day, an appreciation for all the people that have served in times of war and times of peace. You know, we rely on people serving and we do owe them a thanks. And a little personal story. My father was in the Army in World War II and he never really talked about it much. Not something he wanted. You know, I think, I think he wanted to get on with raising his family and having his, you know, having a nice life in Queens, New York, you know. He didn't talk about it much. I was with a ninety-one-year-old uncle who was around when he came back from the war. And I, you know, I was asking him for some memories and he, and he says, first of all, your father fought in the Battle of the Bulge. I was never told that and it kind of blew me away. For people that know the history, that was a very major battle that was sort of like a dash, last-ditch effort by the Nazis to, to push their way through Europe. And it was met with a lot of resistance. It was a lot of bloodshed. And it sounds like it was horrific, but it ultimately was what, you know, one of the key things that led to the containing and ending of the war. So it kind of blew me away and I have even more appreciation within my family of what it meant to be a veteran. And again, thanks to all the veterans. Thank you.
Thank you, Nick. I have a few things in our chat box here. It says, Nick, let's rethink pushing business away from the community. Maybe talk to them on rates. If they close, it helps no one in Buchanan. So you know what?
You know, I've heard, I've heard that before, but I don't know that you, I don't know that you can talk to anybody there that would have any control on that. I'm not, you know, who the, who the parent company is. I, I would appreciate the suggestion if there was some way to actually do that. So whoever that chat person is, maybe go on the village email, email me what, how you think that could be approached. Because I'm not sure how to-
I think the owner is there during the day, like during the day. I've seen the owner there during the day. But you know what? We, we always want to remember, you know, we're, we're talking about the overlay district. We're talking about, you know, at one point, we were talking about putting businesses on the bottom and two-stories apartments. You know, there was discussion on that. But you know what? I think if we want these businesses to be here, I think it's so important that the community supports the business. Because if they don't, we're gonna have vacant storefronts, you know. So it's-
Yes.
I know a lot of times, things are a little more expensive than going to Costco or whatever, but you know, it's so important that we support-
I support the convenience stores, you know. But, and there was a time where those, where the local prices came down to in line with others. And we were even lower at one point a few years back, but then they came back up. I think that whoever that person in the chatroom is, if you would go on the village website, get my email address. Give me, give me your thoughts on how to go about that, you know, make some suggestions. I'd be willing to, to go and ask. You know.
And one other-
That, that portion of the income is going to the parent company, like Barrier Oil, I think has one of the stations, or do they have both? I'm not sure. You know, I don't think it, you know, I think there's somebody who manages or runs the convenience store, but the parent company of the oil, you know, the oil company, which I believe is Barrier Oil for at least the one on Tate Avenue. You know, it's, it's more of their, I'm not sure what dictates that price. And I'm not sure how much it affects the person in the convenience store.
It's the market. It's the market.
Yeah. So I, I'd be happy to look at that a little further. Please reach out to me, whoever that person in the chatroom is.
And one other thing in the chat box, I love the overlay zone idea. I'm sure refinement is needed, but love the idea. So yes, we, we have some things to work through yet on that, but thank you. Thank you for staying, Mr. Chatbox there. Thank you for, for coming in and, and, and with your comments and some questions. Thank you. We appreciate it.
Yes. Now, at the next workshop for that person that made that comment, next workshop on the twenty-fourth, it will be on the agenda to discuss, so.
Yes.
I'm back.
Okay, good. Cindy, do you have anybody? Anybody's called in with any questions or comments?
No, I don't. No.
Okay. Any other board members have any other comments? No? Okay. All right, so now-
I'm sorry, Theresa?
Sure, yes.
Just one thing. I just wanna, I've been seeing a lot of car break-ins, people leaving their cars unlocked. It's happening in the general area. So please, make sure you lock your cars. Don't leave anything of value in the car. They're not really breaking the windows. They're checking for unlocked cars. And I've got reports of cars been, you know, got, gotten into, not broken into, whatever you consider. But there are still, still stuff that's in the car. So please make sure you lock your cars. I'm sorry for last minute, but I just remembered I wanted to say that.
No, thank you for saying that because I know there was a resident in the village hall area that actually caught somebody about two in the morning on video. So these are the same people probably that were in Verplank and they, they just worked their way through communities. So yes, please keep, you know, and Cindy, Cindy can vouch for this. When, when we were growing up, we didn't even lock our doors on our house. So now, make sure, make sure all your doors are locked. Because you just never know who's wandering around the neighborhood at two in the morning.
A lot of things people do too, they leave a garage door opener, opener in the car. And that allows people to get into your house that way as well. So please, make sure no garage door open or valuables in your car.
Mm-hmm. Good point. Thank you for bringing that up. Okay, so I'm going to make a motion to go into executive session to discuss personnel issues. A motion?
I move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you everyone. Have a happy Thanksgiving.